Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation. At this time, I need everybody to please silence your cell phones. If you wish to testify, please go up to the Sergeant-at-Arms desk to fill out a testimony slip. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach today. I repeat, no one is to approach today. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning. My name is Lincoln Wrestler, and I am the Chair of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation. I'd like to welcome my colleague, Chris Marte, who has joined us today, and thank Commissioner Molina and his team for being with us as well. The Department of Citywide Administrative Services is the back office for our entire city government, ensuring city agencies and workers have adequate space, hiring the city workforce via civil service recruitment, managing procurement, overseeing the 30,000-vehicle city fleet, and so much more. City government simply can't function without the hard work of DCAST. One of the agency's most critical responsibilities is overseeing the city's real estate portfolio and ensuring that every city agency has space to do their work. Over the past two decades, the city's spending on leases has grown dramatically. DCAST now oversees a $1.5 billion leasing portfolio, including nearly 400 leases totaling 22 million square feet. The city has been the long, the city has long been the largest tenant in New York City. The city, the size of the city's real estate portfolio and the broad discretion assigned to DCAST leadership has historically made DCAST a target for corruption, both from those within government and those outside of government hoping to profit from misuse of the city's public dollars. During the scandals of the Koch administration, the city's Director of Leasing was convicted for extorting $1.2 million from landlords. In 2015, developers took advantage of poor internal controls at DCAST to lift the Rivington deed restriction and increase their personal profits. Sadly, it appears as though DCAST is once again facing a significant corruption scandal. That history does not reflect the many hundreds of honest, dedicated, professional public servants at DCAST who work hard every day and have the best interests of all New Yorkers at heart. I've worked closely with many of them, and I admire and appreciate the commitment of DCAST workers to our city. But their hard work is being tarnished by questions of ethical impropriety by agency leadership responsible for managing the real estate division. These issues center around the appointment of Jesse Hamilton as Deputy Commissioner of Real Estate Services, which is the real estate arm of the city responsible for overseeing 37 million square feet of space. Mr. Hamilton does not have the commensurate real estate experience, nor leasing, acquisitions, or space planning and management experience. It seemed his "relevant qualification" was his personal and political connection to the mayor. Two years ago, Mr. Hamilton's appointment raised red flags. Today, those flags have turned into criminal investigations. We have spoken with many people, inside and outside of the administration, who have been deeply concerned by Mr. Hamilton's judgment and lack of an ethical compass, including the close direction he received from the mayor's chief political adviser, Ingrid Louis Martin. Last week, it was reported that Mr. Hamilton intervened to shift an 80,000-square-foot lease from the building that won a competitive selection process to 14 Wall Street, a building owned by one of the mayor's top donors. Thanks to Mr. Hamilton, a contract worth tens of millions of dollars was taken away from the bid that performed best under DCAST's rules and instead was given to the bidder that donated the most to the mayor. At the time, the agency's former leadership, including the General Counsel, advised against this unilateral decision by Mr. Hamilton, successfully delaying an apparently corrupt decision. But when both the Commissioner and General Counsel resigned this summer, Mr. Hamilton was free to seemingly prioritize rewarding a political donor over public integrity. It has also been reported that Jesse Hamilton recently went on an international trip with Ingrid Louis Martin and Diana Butros. Ms. Butros was installed in an extremely lucrative position at Cushman Wakefield, as Cushman Wakefield's broker for the city account, managing a multimillion-dollar account with the city of New York, despite her own lack of qualifications. These actions by the Adams administration leave the city council, prosecutors, and New Yorkers with the same basic question: Why? Why did the mayor put a completely unqualified political ally in a job with the power to direct the city's $1.5 billion leasing portfolio? Why did Mr. Hamilton undermine the contracting process, appearing to punish a qualified bidder and reward a mayoral campaign donor? And why did Mr. Hamilton go on vacation to Japan with Ingrid Louis Martin and a real estate executive who benefits from DCAST's real estate deals? It's the job of the city council to provide stringent oversight of the mayor and city agencies. I believe DCAST's first responsibility is not to the mayor nor its political advisers, but to the public we all serve. That starts by answering questions in a forthright manner and joining the city council in committing to advancing transparency, accountability, and integrity in our city government. With that, I want to thank our committee staff, Jay Striganopathy and Erica Cohen, for their work in preparing for this hearing, as well as my team, Communications Director Neve Mooney, and I especially like to thank Molly Haley, my Chief of Staff, who is extraordinary. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Shulman, who's joined us, and we will now also, we will now call on representatives from the administration to testify. We'll be hearing testimony from DCAST Commissioner Luis Molina and are also joined by Executive Deputy Commissioner Shamika Overton. At this time, I will ask Committee Council to administer the affirmation.
Thank you, Councilmember. If you would please raise your right hands. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before your, the council committee today and to honestly respond to council member questions?
I do.
I do. Thank you. You may begin.
Good morning, Chair Wrestler, and members of the City Council Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation. My name is Luis Molina, and I serve proudly as the Commissioner of the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, more commonly known as DCAST. Since joining DCAST in July, and today actually marks my 90-day anniversary as Commissioner, I have taken the time to think both critically and strategically about how we can improve our processes across all divisions, including within real estate services. I've been carefully assessing the work we do to identify opportunities to increase transparency and ensure that all decisions are made in the best interest of the city and all New Yorkers. One such change has been to assign the authority to execute leases with the Executive Deputy Commissioner for Asset and Property Management, ensuring that one of my direct reports has an active role in reviewing and signing each deal. With this new process, it ensures increased oversight into our leasing practices and enhances the awareness of the Office of the Commissioner on the city's real estate transactions. At DCAST, real estate services is charged with acquiring, disposing, and reallocating the city's real property. Additionally, we oversee the city's commercial rental and surplus real estate portfolio through short and long-term lease outs, as well as sales at public auction. Combined, our private long-term and our short-term leases drives nearly $40 million in annual revenue. We also oversee the tracking of leased space and liaison with the Comptrollers Bureau of Contract Administration for the registration of all real property agreements, including new leases, renewal, renewal options, amendment, licenses, and more. Our leasing and acquisitions unit is responsible for identifying and negotiating agreements for private space for city agency operations on behalf of the city of New York. We oversee a portfolio of more than 22 million square feet of privately-owned lease space, including sites selected to accommodate dozens of city agencies with their unique space needs. This important work demands that we balance securing real estate that the city agencies need to carry out their daily operations by developing program specifications, researching the market of available space, preparing test fits, preliminary plan, and scopes of work for building and tenant space improvements, and overseeing construction, renovation, and relocations. Responsibly stewarding the city of New York's financial resources by negotiating lease terms with private landlords and obtaining approvals from the Office of Management and Budget for all costs related to rent, operating expenses, real estate taxes, and tenant improvements, and ensuring that city tenancies support citywide and neighborhood planning goals, including supporting client agencies. This work is accomplished by in-house staff and by contracted tenant representative brokers guided by our advisement and oversight. The leasing process is a multidisciplinary effort that involves multiple steps and review for DCAST. The process begins when the city of Office of Management and Budget, also known as OMB, approves a new need for space. With that approval, we assess city-owned properties to determine if there is an existing property that meets the need. When there is no existing city property that best meets the need identified, we work with our tenant representatives, also known as brokers, to assist us in putting out a solicitation to potential landlords for space that may be a good fit for the best price possible. At the same time, we work with the client agency and our tenant representatives to determine what equipment, design, and square footage may be needed to best meet agency needs. That notification to the commercial market sent out by our tenant representatives may be referred to as a request for a proposal or RFP. To be clear, this RFP is not a solicitation for a city procurement. In other words, it is not an RFP as defined by the Procurement Policy Board, also known as PPB rules, and it is not subject to the PPB rules of competition. Given the legal framework that governs the city's real property transactions, the goal of this notification is to cast a wide net and drive competition in the commercial market such that the city gets the best offer possible. Once we receive responses, DCAST reviews the proposals received to narrow in on the best possible options before beginning with potential negotiation with potential landlords in concert with our tenant representatives. We exchange term sheets, compile site reports that assess building conditions, develop scopes of work that outline the required design and construction plans, take measurements, and develop cost estimates for each project. Once we have decided on the terms of a lease with the selected vendor, DCAST attorneys draft the lease, and it goes through OMB and Law Department review and approval. In addition to those internal reviews, every city lease goes through a public review process as required by the New York City Charter. The City Planning Commission reviews the city's identified need for space, the location proposed to meet that need, and the square footage allocated. A public hearing is then conducted, and the city council is given the opportunity to review the City Planning Commission's decision. It is only after those public approvals are received that the transaction can be finalized for mayoral approval and finally lease execution by DCAST. The city cannot enter into a lease without first going through this public review process. Real Estate Services has been consistently working towards improving internal working flow of the leasing process and the tracking of space utilization in an effort to improve internal operations and save taxpayer dollars. To that end, we built a database called Archibus documenting all non-court office spaces in our portfolio to track mayoral agency tenants, square footage, and seating capacity at each location. Since the database was established, we've had the tools to comprehensively and strategically manage the city's office portfolio in collaboration with OMB and City Hall. This initiative to right-size our office portfolio, better known as the Space Savings Program, began in November 2023 with the collection of space utilization data from 46 mayoral agencies and is now starting to pay off as we're able to make informed decisions regarding consolidations to optimize the use of space and relinquish surplus space without affecting agency operations. In parallel to improving active management of the office portfolio, Real Estate Services has been working to streamline the leasing process internally and reduce the amount of time it takes to go from site search to an executed lease while increasing oversight of space needs and complying with all mandated regulatory requirements from sister agencies. This is in part being done by increasing communication with OMB early on with regard to project parameters and providing high-level estimates of the project, projected cost and projects so that decisions can be made at the onset of the project rather than after significant time and resources have been spent on projects that have to be reworked. In addition, we are working with our tenant representatives and other internal city partners to cast a wider net when combing the market for suitable properties for our needs by reaching out to landlords who might not have done business with the city and conducting searches for space in neighborhoods where the city has historically not had a strong presence. We hope these adjustments to our internal processes help to facilitate client agency operations by providing them the space they need to serve the public within a more reasonable timeline while also reducing the city's expenses through a more strategic use of internal resources. Through all of these efforts, we remain committed to deliver the best and most cost-effective outcomes on behalf of all New Yorkers. Thank you for your time and attention and for allowing me the time to share some brief remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Congratulations on 90 days. And I'll start by asking some questions and then kick it over to colleagues to jump in. I just want to start by asking probably a question that's on everybody's mind. It's been widely reported that the FBI, the Manhattan District Attorney's Office, are investigating the work of DCAST's real estate division. Can you confirm if they have conducted any searches at DCAST's offices at 1 Center Street? Were interviewed any DCAST employees regarding ongoing investigations over the past two months?
Thank you, Chairman, for your question. I have not been notified about any investigation by those authorities into DCAST's leasing practices, and there has not been, to my knowledge to date, any searches of DCAST's offices at 1 Center Street.
Okay. Thank you. I know you're relatively new, as you discussed, in this role. So I just wanted to start with a few questions to better understand your awareness of some of the events that have transpired over the past two years. When you signed off on the lease agreement moving forward at 14 Wall Street, were you aware that the building was owned by large donors to Mayor Adams?
No, I was not aware of that.
Prior to September 26th, were you aware that Deputy Commissioner Hamilton was on an international trip with a lead agent of a multimillion-dollar tenant rep contract, tenant rep contract that he oversees?
I had not been aware of that.
You were not aware the trip was taking place?
I was not aware that the trip was taking place.
Thank you. Are you aware that Ingrid Louis Martin, the chief adviser to the mayor, is a close personal friend of that same tenant rep, Diana Butros?
I was not aware of that relationship.
You were not aware of the relationship? Are you aware that Jesse Hamilton played an instrumental role in installing her in this position as the tenant rep for Cushman Wakefield on the DCAST contract?
I was not aware of that.
Are you aware that DCAST reduced the MWBE goal on the Cushman Wakefield tenant rep contract from 30% to 10% after Diana Butros took over the account?
I was not aware of that.
Okay. If yet, well, it's hard for me to understand what the justification would be for lowering an MWBE goal when the mayor has reportedly said this is such a critical priority for his administration. Are you familiar with the monetary compensation packages that tenant representative firms like Cushman Wakefield receive for the transactions they make on behalf of DCAST?
Yes, in my transition to, into the role, I was aware of, I am aware of what the max percentages tenant representative can receive as commissions through leases or acquisitions.
Great. So just for awareness and for the public record, for lease acquisitions like the 110 William deal, the account manager for the, for the tenant rep on that deal makes $6 million over five years. If the Bronx Logistics Center, a site that Jesse Hamilton has been very focused on, were purchased by DCAST as he has, as he has hoped, that would generate $13.4 million for the tenant rep if it was purchased at the price that had been discussed. So we're talking about very large sums of money. These are extremely lucrative contracts. Okay, I just want to pull back a little bit, some broader questions around the DCAST real estate division. The DCAST Real Estate Services Division is responsible for the space planning and management of 37 million square feet, 22 million of which are leased, citywide acquisitions, architectural design, project management, zoning, land use analysis, property valuation, financial analysis of real estate transactions, and more. This is a complex and critical role that DCAST plays for the city of New York. Do you believe Jesse Hamilton is qualified to serve as the Deputy Commissioner for Real Estate Services at DCAST, and if so, why?
So Deputy Commissioner Hamilton was already the Deputy Commissioner of Real Estate Services prior to my appointment, and based on his credentials, that he does have a law degree. He has an MBA in finance. He has a BS in finance. He served as the Chairman of the New York State Senate Banking Committee, and he's also certified as a real property tax assessment assessor in New York State. So I feel that he meets the qualifications of the position.
As far as I understand, he has zero experience in commercial real estate. Is that accurate, based on your understanding of his resume and experience?
Well, I don't have his entire professional history memorized, so I can't speak to whether or not he, what his real estate commercial experiences has been to date absent the DCAST experience that he has had.
Right. Prior to his work at DCAST, he's had zero experience in commercial real estate. And the Real Estate Services Unit at DCAST now reports to Executive Deputy Commissioner Overton, is that right?
That is correct.
And could you speak to Executive Deputy Commissioner, Executive Deputy Commissioner Overton's qualifications for the role? Specifically, what experience, experiences does, or do you have, I'll just ask you the question directly, in real estate, facility management, or construction?
Thank you for the question. Thank you for the question. Specific to the program areas that you asked about, I don't have extensive knowledge about any of those areas, but I manage a team of professionals that do. So no one person in an agency has subject matter expertise in all areas, but we all rely on a team of experts.
And you're a longtime public servant at DCAST, 30 years, is that right?
That is correct.
You started as an intern, is that true? So worked your way all the way up to Executive Deputy Commissioner, extensive experience in human services and employee relations, is that right?
Correct, as well as DCAST police and administration.
Great. So no, no particular experience in real estate, facilities management, or construction, but longtime employee at DCAST. And Commissioner, I'm familiar with your many years of government service. We worked together a long time, particularly your long experience in law enforcement. Do you have any experience in real estate?
Yeah, so I have extensive experience in managing very highly complex and matrix operations, which would include facility operations, not directly negotiating real estate deals.
Right.
But I've managed big operations across multiple jurisdictions across this country.
I just think it's worth noting that the senior leadership team at DCAST, Commissioner, Executive Deputy Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner, is responsible for overseeing $1.5 billion leasing portfolio, and that chain of command has no experience in commercial real estate. Considering the active state and federal investigations into the work of the DCAST real estate division, how can New Yorkers have confidence that their taxpayer dollars are going to be spent honestly and efficiently when we don't have that particular experience in the leadership team at DCAST today?
Got it. So I'd like to just reiterate that I have not been made aware of any investigation by any of those bodies that you've mentioned into DCAST's real estate leasing process. What I can tell you is this, like Executive Deputy Commissioner Overton stated, who's a very high-level strategic thinker and executive, there are a number of mitigation measures, and no one person has complete autonomy and authority to bound the city of New York or its taxpayers in any of the real estate deals. Managing the real estate portfolio of the city not only includes many experts that exist within DCAST Real Estate Services, but also members from City Hall, the Office of Management and Budget. City planning is involved, as well as this body, the council, is involved in those processes. So there are a number of mitigation measures to ensure that the city taxpayers are getting the best deal and that we are doing the strategic work needed on behalf of the city agencies to make sure we find them the best locations to serve their clients.
Right. I appreciate that. And I just want to acknowledge Councilmembers Brewer, Carr, Powers. Thank you all for joining us this morning. And Hanif is online. Thank you for joining us. But there is significant delegation authority that is placed in the Deputy Commissioner. You've placed it also in the Executive Deputy Commissioner that is within the charter that allows for those individuals to make license agreements on behalf of the city. There are some oversight mechanisms. There's also a great deal of power that's embedded within these senior officials within DCAST. And I'm just concerned about the lack of specific experience in this area that has such broad latitude on spending. I'd like to just shift to the, you know, reports that on Friday, September 27th, Deputy Commissioner Hamilton had his phone seized by investigators when returning from the trip abroad that we've referenced. When did you first become aware of that?
I became aware of that the week of September 30th.
The week of September 30th, okay. I'm going to just bring up my calendar as we're doing this so I can understand things. And since September 30th, have you, have, so that's, the 30th was the following Monday after the, the, the following week after the incident occurred. Since that time where you became aware of his phones being seized and others' phones being seized that handle contracts he oversees, have Mr. Hamilton's responsibilities been modified at all?
No, they have not.
Did you consult with DOI on what actions to take in light of this news?
No, I consulted with my human resources and had my General Counsel review if, based on public reporting and what I knew the week of September 30th, if DC Hamilton had violated any DCAST policies or Conflicts of Interest rules, and he had not.
So, okay, well, that's, that's a leap, so we'll get to that. What authority, so no change in authority, no change in responsibilities? Have any additional guardrails been put in place to ensure that he's acting with integrity in light of his phones being seized?
Well, there, there were no guardrails placed to bound the Deputy Commissioner of Real Estate Services. As you pointed out a few minutes ago, historically, the Deputy Commissioner of Real Estate Services have been embeddedated with the delegation authority of the Commissioner to bind the city to real estate transactions. And during my transition, that occurred 30 days prior to me officially becoming the Commissioner, and during my first 30 days of assessing overall agency operations, I felt that it was important for the Office of the Commissioner, way before any of the events took place here, that a direct report to me should be, have that delegation of authority. So that delegation of authority does not lie with the Deputy Commissioner of Real Estate.
Okay. So since his phones were seized, we've seen no change in responsibilities, no authority stripped from his portfolio, no additional guardrails put in place. Just want to ask, you mentioned consulting with your General Counsel and Human Resources Division around how to handle this, this situation. Did you consult with City Hall about whether to take any action regarding Deputy Commissioner Hamilton?
I did not consult with City Hall. I mean, City Hall, I've had discussions with the First Deputy Mayor about what my opinion is on the work that he has been doing, but I did not consult about guardrails.
Does DCAST have official protocols for how to treat employees who are subject to ongoing law enforcement investigations?
Could you repeat that?
Does DCAST have official protocols for how to treat employees who are subject to ongoing law enforcement investigations?
I'd have to follow up with you on that and what may be in place for DCAST employees. I know that the city in general has a way to address those issues.
You previously ran the Department of Correction, as we all know, which unfortunately has a number of employees who are often subject to different types of investigations. Were there policies that were in place at DOC that you were responsible for implementing when a corrections officer or other member of your staff was subject to an investigation by legal authorities?
Well, I mean, there are a number of steps that a Commissioner can take. I think they have to be based on the situation at hand. In some instances, if we feel as an agency we were going to formally charge an employee, there may be steps that we could take to modify that person, suspend that person, depending on the person's civil service status, could provide us with other limited or more wide options.
Have you conducted, I know you mentioned that when you came in, in the initial 30 days, you conducted some changes in the organizational chart. Have you conducted a review of the leasing decisions that Deputy Commissioner Hamilton has made over the previous two years since he came into this role?
Well, I have not reviewed every leasing decision, but I reviewed the leasing decisions related to 14 Wall Street.
But in light of his phones being seized and all of the attention around this, you didn't think it was necessary to conduct a formal review of the actions that he's taken in this role?
So I'm, I'm conducting an overall review of just the real estate process and how we do things at DCAST, because I think there are always ways to find ways to be more efficient and increase and enhance transparency.
I appreciate those-
But it's not related directly to Deputy Commissioner Hamilton.
I mean, I appreciate those broad commitments, but considering the very concerning allegations that relate to the specific role that Mr. Hamilton has played, I would have thought a review of his previous leasing decisions would be merited. Are you aware of First Deputy Mayor Maria Torres Springer is conducting a comprehensive review of the transactions or leasing decisions that Jesse Hamilton has been responsible for?
I have not been notified of any such review.
Okay. I'd like to ask briefly about the trip, and then we'll shift over to 14 Wall. We've got a few folks who would like to ask questions as well. Before September 27th, were you, you mentioned that you were not aware that Deputy, you were not aware that Deputy Commissioner was on an international trip? Is that what it was you testified to earlier?
I was not aware prior to September 27th.
So you were not aware that he was on this trip with Diana Butros, the lead broker for Cushman Wakefield?
Prior to September 27th, no.
Okay. And since returning, have you asked Mr. Hamilton who paid for the trip?
I've had a number of personal conversations with Deputy Commissioner Hamilton. I did not ask him who paid for the trip. The trip was not paid for by the city of New York. It was not a business trip. It was a personal vacation.
It was a personal vacation that he took with somebody who handles a multimillion-dollar contract that he oversees. Do you think it's appropriate for someone in charge of such a significant lucrative contract that he oversees to vacation with that person?
Based on what I have been informed and what I know up to date, there has not been anything internally that the Deputy Commissioner of Real Estate has done. anything internally that the Deputy Commissioner of Real Estate has done that has violated any DCAST policy or conflicts of interest.
And have you consulted with, okay, we'll dig into this further, but did you consult with DCAST's General Counsel or COIB when you were informed about this trip?
I consulted with the DCAST General Counsel and our Human Resource Personnel.
Okay. And-
Being that it was not a city trip, there would not have been a reason for me to consult with, for the agency to consult with COIB on the issue. It was a personal vacation.
A personal vacation that he took with a representative of a contract that's worth many millions of dollars annually to the account holder, that he is responsible for overseeing. He oversees the procurement process for determining whether she continues to have that contract. He went on a trip with her. We don't know who paid for it, according to your testimony today. And you can say it was not, you don't believe it was illegal based on the conversations you've had with the General Counsel, but it was clearly unseemly and highly inappropriate.
But we should point out that Deputy Commissioner Hamilton or whoever's the Deputy Commissioner of Real Estate does not solely on their own oversee the procurement process of any city lease.
Yes, but from your long experience in government, you know as well as I do that a Deputy Commissioner has important influence in determining the vendors that they work with on contracts that they oversee. There's a competitive process, and that they play an important role. So Mr. Hamilton's, we've seen no change in Mr. Hamilton's responsibility, including his oversight of this contract with Cushman Wakefield since the trip was taking place. I know you mentioned there was no change in his responsibilities, but he still oversees the same Cushman Wakefield contract?
He oversees both of the tenant representative contracts that are Cushman and Wakefield and CBRE Group.
And have you met with Ms. Butros since this trip when her phones were seized?
I've met with the Cushman and Wakefield team, and I believe that was, yes, post, post their personal vacation.
Yes. My understanding is that on October 8th, you hosted Mr. Hamilton and Ms. Butros in your office regarding the purchase of a large facility that would, if the purchase were to move forward or the lease were to move forward, it enormous, it would enormously benefit Ms. Butros for many millions of dollars. Is that right?
No, I've met with the Cushman Wakefield team-
Led by Ms. Butros?
Which comprised of about ten people, which included Mrs. Butros, for them to present a possible acquisition that's in the early stages of consideration.
The Bronx Logistics Center.
The Bronx Logistics Center, which may or may not be acquired.
And so this was, just to be clear, this meeting was hosted in your office on October 8th, on the, with the Cushman Wakefield team that Ms. Butros leads and Mr. Hamilton, after their phones were seized, coming back from Japan.
Other members of the DCAST Real Estate team were also at that meeting, and it was in our DCAST office conference room at headquarters.
Okay. We'll come back to that a little bit more. I'm going to just ask a couple 14 Wall Street questions. We'll then kick it to Councilmember Marte and other colleagues who have questions. So you referenced this a bit in your testimony, that at the beginning of the administration, DCAST implemented a new competitive request for proposals process to identify office leasing opportunities. When was an RFP issued for space for DIFTA, and when were responses due?
I have a note of the date for you. I just want to look it up here.
I'm happy to ask you to confirm if you'd prefer.
So the pilot RFP in question that you're referring to was issued in September of 2024, 2023.
Right. And responses were due?
In November of 2023. It was about eight weeks.
And which building did DCAST select as the finalist and begin lease negotiations with?
Well, we selected 14 Wall Street in the end.
But the finalist was selected, and lease negotiations ensued with a particular building. Could you clarify which building that was?
So at stages of the framework of the request for proposal process, the two best and leading candidates were 250 Broadway and 14 Wall Street.
A best and final offer was made to 250 Broadway, is that correct?
I would not characterize it as a best and final offer. I would characterize it that we had some agreement in what 250 Broadway's position was, but these negotiations, like the majority of real estate negotiations, are very fluid, and we are always seeking the best price for the city taxpayers of this city. And 14 Wall Street, from the onset, was always the cheapest option for city taxpayers.
So just so I understand, DCAST entered into negotiations with 250 Broadway, made a best and final offer to 250 Broadway, which is a technical term, a best and final offer was made to that tenant, to that building owner, excuse me, for a deal to be transacted. And Deputy Commissioner Hamilton, unilaterally, reached out to DCAST officials and informed them that he was no longer interested in moving forward with 250 Broadway, that he was redirecting the transaction to 14 Wall Street.
No, I think it's important to frame things in the proper way, in that first of all, 14 Wall Street was always the preferred location for the Department of the Aging. And we give a lot of deference to agencies as to where they best feel their workers can do their work and them serve the clients that they serve. With that, we then begin to negotiate with a number of parties that want to do business with the city, and 14 Wall Street was part of that consideration process.
Commissioner Molina, I've been, I've worked for the city for a long time, as you know, and I cannot recall an instance where an agency makes a best and final offer and then unilaterally walks away from it for no apparent reason. So I'm confused. When was the BFO made for 250 Broadway?
When was the what made?
When was the best and final offer made for 250 Broadway? Do you have a date? You said you reviewed this case?
We can provide you-
You reviewed the emails?
-when we communicated with 250 Broadway, 250 Broadway, but again, this was not a binding lease. This was a fluid negotiation process that we have to ensure that we have the best price possible for city taxpayers. And at the end of the day, 14 Wall Street represented was thirty, over $31 million cheaper than locating the Department of the Aging at 250 Broadway, which was not the location they wanted to be in. They wanted to be in 14 Wall Street.
So I just want to make sure I follow this right. Best and final offer was made, 250 Broadway was selected, right? So best and final offer was made, if I have this right, tell me if this is correct, to 250 Broadway and 14 Wall Street, and DCAST selected 250 Broadway?
No, 250 Broadway was under serious consideration, but there was, there was not a binding agreement made with the ownership group of 250 Broadway. It is a fluid situation to make sure that we get the best price for the city taxpayers of the city. And 14 Wall Street represented an over $31 million savings by placing the agency there, where they wanted to be versus 250 Broadway, which was a location that they did not like.
So just so I understand, DCAST selected 250 Broadway based on its best and final offer, and then unilaterally changed its course of action?
No, DCAST had under serious consideration entering into agreement with 250 Broadway. And that consideration was non-binding, and there was a back and forth-
So there was no selection process of 250 Broadway, where they were selected based on their best and final offer. You're testifying today. I just want to make sure that I have this on the record very clearly, because we've heard from many people inside and outside the administration who have told us explicitly contrary to this. So I just want to make sure I have it-
Sure.
...clear from you on the record that we have this accurately. A best and final offer was made to 250 Broadway. It was selected by DCAST. The city walked away from it, and then unilaterally shifted course to 14 Wall Street. You're saying that is not true?
No, what I'm saying is that 250 Broadway, first of all, we should take a step back.
Okay.
The pilot RFP was non-binding, and the non-binding standards of that RFP were made very clear in the, in the, in the language of the RFP for all parties to understand, right? And the goal of that RFP was to do a couple of things. One, make sure that we can move faster in selecting a site and executing a lease on behalf of the city, a process that normally takes sometimes over two years. We wanted to go between seven and fourteen months. That was our goal. We also wanted to open up the opportunity, as you've stated, minority and women-owned business landlords possibly that had never really done work with the city, to be able to be given consideration of that. And we advertised the pilot RFP on our website and in Crane's Business Magazine, so that individuals could know that it was being offered. But again, it was non-binding. As we evaluated originally what I would describe as the four optimal locations that could possibly house aging, aging's preference was always to be in 14 Wall Street. As we were going through the scoring process, it appeared at that moment that 250 Broadway might be the better option. But given that we were going to ultimately have a savings of over $31 million, aging was adaptable. And the layout of 14 Wall Street, there was capital improvements that did not have to be done at 14 Wall Street, and that saved the taxpayers of the city over $31 million. Nothing in the communications, though seriously considered, option of going to 250 Broadway were binding. No lease was executed. What we're committed to is making sure that we're bringing the best value to the city taxpayers of the city, and that's what happened in this process.
Appreciate the context that you're providing. I just want to, again, get as clear as I can on the record, a best and final offer was made to 250 Broadway and 14 Wall. DCAST selected 250 Broadway, and then Deputy Commissioner Hamilton, unilaterally, decided to move in a different direction. You're saying that is not true?
I'm saying that 250 Broadway was under-
Could I just get a yes or no on that? Because I just want to make sure I get it.
Based on what I know to date, 250 Broadway was under serious consideration, but it was not in a binding situation with 250 Broadway, and it was our responsibility to evaluate every location to bring the best deal forward for the city's taxpayers.
I just want to be very clear on the record to say to that. We have gotten very clear information from people who are involved in this process that 250 Broadway was selected with the best and final offer, and there, as has been reported in the press, emails from Deputy Commissioner Hamilton that unilaterally decided to move in a different direction. Understanding it had been one of the sites that was considered, but after a best and final offer was selected for 250 Broadway, Deputy Commissioner Hamilton chose to go to a different building.
Deputy Commissioner Hamilton made the decision that helped save the taxpayers of this city over $31 million.
But isn't it troubling that the Deputy Commissioner could just unilaterally choose which building to pick or not pick?
He didn't unilaterally do that.
It sounds, certainly sounds like it.
No.
You just said he made the decision to save taxpayers' money. He didn't unilaterally make that decision?
He made a decision in consultation with the former General Counsel-
Didn't the, oh, okay.
That made it clear-
Let's get into that.
That the decision was non-binding with 250 Broadway.
Commissioner Molina, you said you've reviewed this file, this case. Is it not true, or is it true, that the former General Counsel deemed the decision to move away from 250 Broadway as unadvisable? Is that true?
No, what the former General Counsel, based on what I have seen, acknowledged that the optics of changing the decision could be, could be troubling to people, but it was not an illegal decision to make.
Not illegal, but unadvisable?
Well, we get advice from counselors all the time.
The General Counsel advised against making this decision. I think it's notable that the General Counsel advised against making this decision, and while, and when, when did the General Counsel advise against making this decision?
I don't know the exact date of when he advised that the optics of making a decision might be troubling, but it's important to note that we have to first and foremost be concerned about city taxpayers spending over $31 million more on a location in which the Department of Aging did not want to be in.
Okay. So the General Counsel and the former agency leadership advised against this decision. You began July 1, 2024. When were you first briefed on the 14 Wall Street lease?
I can't recall at what stage I was briefed exactly on the 14 Wall Street decision.
But you made the decision to move forward on the 14 Wall Street lease after it had been previously halted, delayed? When you did that, were you aware that the former agency leadership and the former General Counsel had thought that it was unadvisable to move forward on 14 Wall Street?
I didn't know about the former General Counsel's position, what I was aware of when the, when the decision was made for us to move forward with 14 Wall Street, that we were going to be saving the city over $31 million.
So you feel 100% confident that all protocols and regulations have been followed, that there was no corruption involved in steering this estimated $4 million a year, 20 million, 20-year lease to a massive mayoral donor? You're 100% confident there is no corruption, every protocol was followed appropriately, this is absolutely on the up and up?
Based on what I've seen to date, the best decision and deal for city taxpayers was made.
And you're aware of the-
And we saved thirty, over $31 million.
So you were, you mentioned that you were not aware earlier in the testimony of who owns 14 Wall Street when you decided to move forward on this decision. Is that right? That's what you testified to at the beginning of the hearing?
Aware of what?
You were not aware who owned 14 Wall Street when you decided to move forward on the deal?
No, I was not.
But the owner, as you know now, is Alex Roft. Is that correct?
That's what's been reported, yes.
And you're aware that the owner has donated $15,000 to the mayor's legal defense fund 14 days after the RFP closed?
I don't know that with certainty. I know that that's what's been reported.
Okay. I'd like to offer Councilmember Marte, who represents Lower Manhattan, the chance to ask questions, and then we'll follow that up with Councilmembers, maybe Schulman or Powers, and then we'll go to Brewer.
Thank you, Chair Russler, for your questioning. Thank you, Commissioner, for being here. You repeatedly mentioned that you were looking for the best deal for New Yorkers to save $31 million. However, wouldn't it be cheaper to renovate the current Two Lafayette location where DIFTA is at than actually move a whole agency to somewhere new? In 2021, in July 2021, there was appraisal of renovation costs for Two Lafayette Street. How much was that?
I'd have to get back with you on the exact numbers of what the possible cost of renovating Two Lafayette was. I think it's important, and I'll get back to you with the number, but I think it's important to understand that if we, I believe it was more costly, but I'll confirm what that number is for you. The other question is, if we were to pursue that, we would have still had to find temporary space for Department of the Aging, and they would have had to go somewhere to be able to continue their operations. So what this deal represents with 14 Wall Street is an over $31 million savings versus going to 250 Broadway.
But from your experience of managing massive real estate portfolios, and your current position and your previous position at DOC, wouldn't it be cheaper in the long run to relocate an agency for a year or two while renovation happened at a much cheaper space, and then bring them back and pay lesser rent?
I don't know. I mean, each scenario has to be evaluated on its own. So as I sit here today, I can't tell you if a complete gut rehab and rebuilding of Two Lafayette would have been cheaper or not, because I don't have those numbers in front of me. It may have been.
And why was Two Lafayette inadequate for DIFTA's headquarters?
Two Lafayette, so I'm just being notified now, the Two Lafayette renovation cost would have been approximately $80 million. And that would not have counted any temporary relocation lease that we would have had to pay for, or what the impact of that operation to try to move aging to a temporary location would have had on not only its workforce, but also the clients that they serve.
Okay. Can you send us that information there?
Absolutely.
Thank you. What is the current plans for Two Lafayette now that it's vacant? Has the city created a plan of how to move forward with the space?
Well, Two Lafayette is not vacant. It's still being occupied by, by DIFTA. The lease for 14 Wall Street has yet to be executed. That is still going through its approval process. And what our plans may be for Two Lafayette moving forward have yet to be determined.
But wouldn't, for it to be used by a city agency, it would still have to be renovated, potentially?
Oh, absolutely.
And so you're, you're going to do that cost anyway. You're going to do that renovation anyway, probably for another city tenant?
It's possible, yes.
Okay. Are there, you said, you mentioned, I want to be correct, there's no capital improvement at 14 Wall Street?
There is none, and it is a turnkey deal. So they're moving in, the Department of Aging, and will be using the existing space as it is laid out to include the furniture. There might be some minor, small touch-ups that have to be done, but it's not at any capital cost to the city taxpayers.
And is 14 Wall Street a larger office than Two Lafayette?
I don't know the square footage off the top of my head of Two Lafayette. I just know that the usable square footage that we will be using at 14 Wall Street is just over 80,000 usable square feet.
I mention that because, as we all know, a lot of office workers now work remote, and many don't go to the office five days a week, especially when a lot of these estimates about- especially when a lot of these estimates about who's going to use the space and how long they're going to be used. So hopefully, it's a smaller space, because then there wouldn't really be any reason to make this massive move by the agency.
Well, I don't, I wouldn't describe it as a, as a massive move. I think that, you know, we've relocated agencies many times, expanded agencies if that was needed, and of course, with our space savings initiative, we are taking into consideration the fact that we have individuals that work for the city that are now working, teleworking two days a week, and take that into consideration to be able to downsize square footage that is needed.
Chair Russler, I have two more questions. Are there any other city agencies at 14 Wall Street?
Not to my knowledge.
Has the city-
But I can confirm that in follow-up.
Has the city have office spaces within the portfolio of the property manager at 14 Wall Street?
I don't know the answer to that question now, but I can see if we have any leased space that we're leasing under the same existing ownership and get back to you on that.
And my final question, DCAST has the power to withdraw this application, right? And so wouldn't you think with all the questionings, all the press that's been coming out about this transaction, that you would withdraw it, take a second look, make sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted before trying to move forward with this application?
No.
So you're fully confident on the process, fully confident on all the numbers, that this was the best deal for New Yorkers?
As I sit here today, this was the best deal for New Yorkers that saved New York taxpayers over $31 million.
I know you've been on the job for just 90 days or so, but maybe when you were Commissioner at DOC, have you ever gone through an RFP process where the application was given to the council and you reconsidered and withdrew the application?
I've been involved with a number of RFPs across different jurisdictions in my, in my time leading or co-leading agencies. It's possible that that may have happened, but a, a moment doesn't come to mind.
Okay. I just want to say it's unprecedented not to do that. You can withdraw at any time. I've been involved with DCAST site depositions where it was withdrawn at the last moment when it was within the council. So I highly suggest, probably for the best of all New Yorkers and probably for the best of the reputation and trust of DCAST, that you withdraw this application, review everything before resubmitting it to the city council.
Thank you for your suggestion.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Councilmember Marte for her sharp line of questioning and, you know, note, you testified today, Commissioner, that you were not aware of the donations that were made, the $15,000 made to Legal Defense Fund, to the mayor's legal defense fund. You were not aware of, of that, and yet you're totally confident that this is on the up and up, and that you're not even considering withdrawing the application, considering all of the scrutiny and questions that have been raised around the questionable decision-making. I'm, I just, for me, there's a serious disconnect there that I'm struggling with. We will now go to Councilmember Schulman, followed by Councilmember Powers. I'd also like to acknowledge Councilmembers Gutierrez, Vernikoff, and Palladino. Thank them all for joining us, and now Councilmember Schulman.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, ma'am.
So a question, who owns 14 Wall Street?
Yeah. What's, does it have a company name? Yeah, yeah. Alexander Roth owns 14 Wall Street, but I just want to be sure there might not be a business or company name that might be the ownership documents of the location.
Okay, it's a very popular subject today, so I would, I would presume you, you can find out exactly who, who owns it, and especially if you're doing business with them. So how does the floor plate of 14 Wall Street compare to 2 Lafayette?
The, the floor plan?
Yeah.
Well, there's two big distinctions. One of the issues that made 250 Broadway so much more expensive for city taxpayers, in addition to the per-square footage rate being much higher than 14 Wall Street, 250 Broadway, because it was raw space, required the city to contribute over $10 million of capital improvements to that location. And 14 Wall Street is a turnkey location in which the Department of Aging is willing to take the property as is, to include the furniture, so that there's no capital improvement cost to going to 14 Wall Street, which is aging's preferred location and has always been cheaper per square footage than 250 Broadway.
I know my colleague, Councilmember Marte, asked about other city agencies there. How many, just in terms of number, I know he asked for specifics, how many other city agencies are at 14 Wall Street right now?
I can follow up with you. There are none. I've just been informed, there are none.
So if there are none, but yet it's being made a priority over 250 Broadway, which does have a number of city agencies, that's the sort of a disconnect, for me, there's a little bit of a disconnect. I understand you talking about the money saved, but if we're already doing business with a company that owns 250 Broadway, I'm sure that that could have been negotiated, but I'm just, I'm just making a comment there. So what is the Citywide Space Saving Task Force?
The Citywide Space Savings Task Force?
Mm-hmm.
Sure, give me a second here. The Citywide Space Savings Task Force, it was, it's an initiative that was kicked off under the First Deputy Mayor Sheena Wright in November of 2023, and we continue to report on our progress to the Office of the First Deputy Mayor, who is now FDM Torres Springer, and is working cautiously in partnership to ensure that we identify space that the city's utilizing, both city-owned space as well as leased space, to make sure that any excess space, underused space, that we are not, that we are utilizing appropriately or downsizing where downsizing is appropriate.
No, it's a, it's a great idea. Who, do you know the members who's on, who's on it, who serves on it?
Well, I mean, the Office of the First Deputy Mayor, members of OMB, members of DCAST are part of that initiative.
How often do they meet?
I could follow up with you on how often they, they meet.
You could get us those details, and what's the scope of their duties?
Well, there were different stages regarding the initiative. So in, in the first stage of the initiative was really data collection, and that took place between November of 2023 and February 2024. Between February and May of '24, DCAST did data analysis on the information that was collected, and we also utilized surveys and data from the city-owned and leased portfolio report to make an assessment so that we can make some saving target recommendations to the agencies. And of course, the agencies, who are critical partners in this process, are thinking about ways they may be able to consolidate space.
So they haven't come up with any recommendations yet?
Not as of yet, it's ongoing to work.
Do you know when they're expected to?
I hope, my goal is that I hope that we get to sort of a planned way forward by the end of the year.
So it's been reported that the Citywide Space Savings Task Force has asked the Law Department, Fire Department, and Social Services to reduce their office footprint. Are these the only agencies that you're asking to reduce space?
I would not think that it is the only agency that we're asking to reduce space, you know, to give credit to Councilmember Marte's statement earlier, we are in a new, the world of work today. So we have a lot of members of our city workforce that are working remote. We are helping our workforce adapt to the culture where it's not one desk, one person, and we have a lot of shared spaces. So it's an ongoing partnership that will involve many of the city's agencies, not just the ones that you've mentioned.
So the last question I have, there are a number, Chair, I just want to finish my, thank you. There are a number of vacancies, as we know, at mayoral agencies, and we're trying to, we're working with the city to try and get people to join the administration and all of that. So how, if you're reducing space, how are you going to have room if we really do start recruiting and getting more workers?
No, it's, it's a great question. So I think it, it depends on, on the workforce you're describing. For those workers that are working two days remotely and three days in the office, there is what is normally called a hoteling concept of shared spaces that workers can share in order to get their work done. And that speaks to us moving away from a one-desk, one-person concept and just being more sound with rightsizing our, the, our city spaces.
Thanks so much. We'll now shift to-
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schulman. Now shift to Councilmember Powers, followed by Councilmember Brewer.
Thank you. Hi, Commissioner. I want to go back to something you said earlier. When DCAST scored the RFP applications, was 250 Broadway scored higher than 14 Wall Street?
Yeah, in one area of the scoring of the four locations under consideration, there was one area where 250 Broadway scored higher. Now, it's, it's important to understand that when we did the pilot RFP, what we sent out was a lot of information that normally would not be shared with prospective landlords, and one of those were floor plans, also known as test fits, to see if within the existing footprint, the agency's operations can be placed. And initially, at the time, the test fit scored higher at 250 Broadway because it was completely raw space, which would require an over $10 million capital improvement to meet the needs of the, of aging. In conversation with Department of Aging and their preferred desire to go to 14 Wall Street, they communicated to DCAST that the test fit wasn't absolute, and they had, they felt that they can adapt to the current layout of 14 Wall Street, which benefited 60 city taxpayers, because it saved us over $31 million that aging could do that.
So, so there are areas where 250 Broadway scored higher, and then you, there was an evaluation also on cost and on, of course, agency preference. I'm not sure agency preference goes into the scoring, does it?
I mean, it's, it's something that we take seriously into consideration, agency preference, but I think in, as far as the scoring of the locations, I don't know that that gave it, gave weight in this.
How many areas are the four locations scored on? And how many did 250 Broadway score highest, higher than 14 Wall Street on?
They're, they're scored on test fit, they're scored on a site visit score, and there is a landlord interview score.
Okay. In those three categories, what was 250 Broadway relative to 14 Wall Street in terms of scoring?
250 Broadway scored higher on the test fit at a 90 versus a 45. On the, on the site visit score, 14 Wall Street scored a 90, and 250 Broadway scored an 85. And on the landlord interview score, 14 Wall Street scored an 80, and 250 Broadway scored an 85.
Okay. So 250 Broadway scored higher in two of the three categories, and I would say is relatively close in the second category, and the first category doubled 14 Wall Street. So on the scoring, it strikes me that 250 Broadway was scoring higher than 14 Wall Street. I recognize and understand the point about the tax dollars, and I think that is important, but does D, how often is DCAST taking the lower-scoring application when they score them out?
So I, I think it's important to point out that this process that we engaged in was a pilot process, and this RFP does not abide by the PPP rules, and also was a non-binding process.
I, I understand that. I guess my question is, in normal procedures, you take the highest-scoring application, is that correct?
I, I can't say that's in normal procedures because this was a pilot RFP. What I can say is that in real estate, it is a fluid situation where we're, we're taking it under consideration what might be the best for the city as far as taxpayers and what might be-
Well, so I guess my question is, if you have a higher-scoring application, and then you have, you have a higher-scoring application between two applications, and you have a cost differential, what is the normal procedure for then how to choose those locations?
If we enter into what would be a negotiated process with the locations under consideration, we work with our partner agencies, in this case, the Department of Aging, to find out what would be their preferred space, how their operations work in either space, what their flexibility is, and then cost is also a major factor, and here we had a $31 million savings.
Okay, but it's, it sounds to me, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds to me like in the process, DCAST had scored the RFP application higher for 250 Broadway. The general counsel agreed with that assessment or thought it was inadvisable to change that assessment, and there was a decision to go to 14 Wall Street.
My understanding is that the general counsel felt that the optics of, of, of going to 14 Wall Street might look troubling, but was not illegal. And in my, in my assessment, it would have been more important to do two things, get an agency in a location that they preferred, and not, in my opinion, spend over $31 million more to be in 250 Broadway, because we were concerned that the decision we were making might look a little troubling to outside observers. We're here to explain that.
Understood, but can you just explain to us why the general counsel thought it was inadvisable, even optically? Like, what were the optics that they were, that, that the general, the former, I think former general counsel was concerned about in terms of switching? Because I guess, what was the underlying, what was the underlying criteria that they were using to then say, if you are switching, I would be concerned about the optics of that? I assumed it would be the score, that they've scored higher in the assessment, and then there was a switch?
Yeah, well, I mean, if you'd like to call the former general counsel here himself to speak with him.
Well, I assume you, I assume you had a conversation with the general counsel.
No, I didn't have a conversation with the general counsel, because he retired, and at the time these conversations occurred, as I have been briefed to date, he was having them with Deputy Commissioner Hamilton and the former Commissioner Don Pennock. His concern was that we were in serious consideration for 250 Broadway. It appeared that we were leaning in that direction to possibly execute a lease with 250 Broadway, but at the end of the day, the best fiscal decision for the city and the preferred location for aging was 14 Wall Street, and it saved the city taxpayers over $31 million.
So I just want to finish on this question. In a normal, I know it's a pilot, but in normal, I, I'm asking an honest question, this is not a gotcha question. In an, in a normal selection process for an office space, if DCAST ranks one higher than another, how often do they change the decision based on the cost consideration?
I think the rankings traditionally of locations are fluid, and at one point, a location could be higher than another, another location could be higher. It is a fluid situation until we get what we think is the best deal for city taxpayers.
Okay. The Chair asked a couple of questions, including whether there was a review of other real estate transactions that this deputy commissioner was involved, and I think the answer was no. There was an answer, a question about guardrails that weren't put in place. I believe the answer was no. There was a question about knowledge of review, knowledge of review by the deputy's mayor's office. I believe the answer was no. I believe there was questions about knowledge about the vacation, and the answer was no. Have there been any changes or modifications to the role and responsibilities of the deputy commissioner?
There have been no changes or modifications in the role of the deputy commissioner of real estate. The one change that I made, which predates this, these events, as I was coming in, I felt that if the city was going to be bound to lease deals, that that decision lay with my office and the executive deputy commissioner of asset and property management. So I changed the delegation of authority to the executive deputy commissioner of property management, so that the office of the commissioner can have greater insight into city real estate operations.
Okay. My, my, my piece of advice, for what it's worth, is that there is a comprehensive review done here, and that we do real, we do evaluate real estate transactions. Certainly, whether you think something was illegal or not, it does raise questions about how it was evaluated and how, how ultimately the decision was made, and I recognize cost considerations, I recognize agency preferences, things that are part of the evaluation process. There's also a scoring process that's part of an RFP that feels quite important. So if, if this agency is not taking it, and you're not aware of the deputy mayor doing a, a, a review, which I became aware of in this hearing as well, I do think it's worth looking at all the transactions that have, have that deputy commissioner's been part of, to, to better understand whether other, other, other questions will be raised in, in, in other transactions as well. Do you agree with that?
I thank you for your suggestion.
Okay, so I guess not. And, and, and finally, is a deputy commissioner testifying today?
He is not.
We did request that he attend.
Okay.
And he did say to the press adly yesterday that he was definitely coming, but we have not yet seen him.
Thank you.
I just think, a couple of clarifying questions based on Councilmember Powers' thoughtful line of questioning, and then we'll shift to Councilmember Brewer. Could you clarify, the offer for 250 Broadway, you said, required extensive work, a taxpayer expense?
Yes.
Could you break that down for us? Was the landlord of 250 Broadway prepared to cover the vast majority of the cost to renovate the space to accommodate the city?
We were going to cover just over $10 million of it, and the landlord was going to cover the balance of that.
Can you confirm that? That that's-
Will you want me to confirm the number?
No, I'm asking if the executive deputy commissioner can just confirm that, because I don't believe that's true. I just wanted to give her the chance to correct that with you.
So you don't believe that I'm telling you the truth?
I don't believe you have the right numbers. I just want to just ask. So I'm just asking the question, is that accurate?
Yes, it's accurate.
Okay. It's not the, not, it was inaccurate. Okay, um, it's not the, uh, not, was inconsistent with our understanding. And then could you?
Well, if you want, I can share the exact number of the capital improvement costs that the city taxpayers would have had to have paid were approximately $10,240,745.
That is not the number that the landlord committed to covering?
No, that is our portion that we have to cover. The landlord would have covered the difference.
We would love to review that data.
We'll follow up with you and give you the exact number.
That'd be great. And then could you confirm the date once again that you delegated the authority for license agreements to executive deputy commissioner Overton?
Um, I did that in September. Oh, we executed, well, I was in, I was in conversations regarding the delegation of authority with my, um, with my general counsel and we executed it on December, on October 9th.
October 9th, okay, so that did follow.
We began talking about it September, about September 3rd.
Okay, so following the phone seizures of Jesse Hamilton, the delegation authority was shifted to executive deputy commissioner Overton?
The discussions of shifting delegation began on September 3rd and we executed it on October 9th because they're complex legal delegation documents.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we had that accurately for the record. Uh, yes, council member Brewer, our former chair of this fine committee.
Oh God, that was a long time ago. Um, you thought, you thought correction was difficult, huh?
I, I missed the Department of Corrections because as you know, councilman, that was a very passionate work for me.
Yes, I know. This is more challenging, however.
I think there are different challenges, but nonetheless, I'm happy to be here with you today.
So, one of my questions, before you were there, of course, these two, um, real estate companies were selected. How, do you know, um, how long their contract is? Or how does, how is that contract determined, et cetera, et cetera, Cushman and Wakefield and CBRE? Because, and also how do we know what their commission, commission payments are? Just in terms of those two companies?
Got it. So, I can go back to 2017 is when CBRE Group and Cushman and Wakefield were selected as the tenant representatives for the city. They're also known as brokers. Those kind of are interchangeable in title. Back in 2017, that contract was, um, three years long with one, two-year renewal and there have been negotiated acquisition extensions since then. We are preparing to, um, have an RFP, which is guided by procurement rules, which is different than our real estate transactions. That's going to be released soon so that we can expand the number of tenant representatives that can represent the city on real estate transactions.
Okay, that's a good thing. So that'll go in, go out soon to have perhaps new people representing the city in these tenant discussions.
Well, it's a competitive.
Right, we'll see.
PPP process.
Exactly.
We'll see.
And then their commission payments, are those hidden from the public or does one get to know what they make on these deals?
Well, it's, it's, it's in the contract and what we have in the tenant rep contract is a cap. So these tenant representatives also represent, um, some of the locations being proposed and the commissions that tenant representatives get are paid by the landlords. They're not paid by the city.
Okay, so they're all paid by the owner, okay. Um, the other question I have is, now, maybe you discussed this earlier, but the amount of space at Two Lafayette is more than what would be at 14 Wall, right? More space, is it just?
I, I can, I can follow up with you as far as the, the size of Two Lafayette versus 14 Wall. I can tell you that at 14 Wall Street, we will be charged the usable square footage of just over 80,000 square feet.
Okay, because I think it's 100 something. Not to say maybe it's not as conducive, I don't know, at Two Lafayette.
Well, the Department of the Aging deemed it conducive to their operations.
Okay, now, the other issue I have is having worked for the city for 100 years, it seems to me that there is, there are fewer, as you suggested, people working for the city and less time in city space. So why in the world do we need more space now? Because it would seem to me we have fewer employees and we're not working necessarily five days a week, yet it seems according to the press that we've doubled the amount of space that we're either leasing or on. I don't understand how that works.
So I, I think it's important that traditionally, many of these real estate transactions take two to three years to realize. So what's being reported from our MMR.
Right.
Are lease transactions that were already in the pipeline of being done, that in many cases predate the administration and also include the square footage that was needed to deal with the migrant asylum crisis.
Okay, but it's, but you know, it's very non-transparent. Example, I don't know what's available at one center street, having worked there for many, many years. I understand that there's some space that needs to be fixed up. I've been in every single floor myself. Also at, you know, what are the other city-owned buildings? Two Lafayette is going to be vacant essentially. So why are we, and also what's with, I call it 22 Reed Street? Even though that building's in bad shape, is there more space there? What I'm saying is, we all want to save the taxpayer money. Are there not city-owned buildings that the Department for the Aging could go into? I have to say from, it doesn't seem to ring true that we absolutely have to rent more space at vast cost.
Okay, so, um, let me just, I'll answer it this way. We do not make the decision, right, for an agency to go into a leased space.
You do not make the decision.
What happens is, um, a decision is, is made where an agency may need to relocate. The current space that they're in is not optimal moving forward. And OMB is involved with determining, after they request for space, to determine where can that space go if it's determined that they should be considered for additional space. We then do an inventory of our, our space that's available within city buildings and we have like, I think it's like less than or just about 1% space that's vacant that can be utilized. And as you know, our buildings are very, very old.
I know.
Um, once we determine that there is not a suitable city building that an agency can use, that is when we begin a process, working with the tenant representatives to identify sites, locations that could be used. And we begin this process of trying to figure out where is the best location. We give a lot of deference to the agency on location because they know their workforce better, they know the clients that they serve better. And then we work with our tenant representatives on trying to figure out what location best can suit the operations of that given agency.
Okay, I mean, I hear you. The issue is that the public, with all due respect, has no idea that all of the city space is taken or not up to par. We don't have any information. So the public thinks, I'd love to go to 14 Wall Street. I'm sure it's a nice space, but you know, is it the most, um, is it the best for the taxpayer? That's also, you're asking the same question, between 250 and 14 Wall. I'm asking another question, which is, isn't there any city-owned space? Even though they may not want to go there, I understand that. But it, it seems to me that we're not giving the public the full status.
Well, let me be clear. It is not up to the agency to determine if they do not want to be in a city-owned space. DCAST makes that determination if a city-owned space is available for the agency's needs. And in the case of aging, there was none. Their preferred location was 14 Wall Street and we got the best financial deal for city taxpayers, which saved the city taxpayers over $31 million versus going to 250 Broadway.
Okay, so is it true though that there were, it ended up being just between 250 Broadway and 14 Wall? There were no other buildings that came into that scenario?
There, there were. There were two other locations that were in Brooklyn and, um.
I don't want to go to Brooklyn either.
Well, I, I, the, the agency didn't feel that those locations were optimal.
Okay.
For their vulnerable clientele.
All right, so it's, the whole thing, the trouble with this process, as you know, it's almost like you want to have a building that has not donated to anybody. You want an owner that has not donated to anybody. Almost should put that on your list of things to be evaluated. I'm not kidding. Because in this world today, it, it has dramatic, um, just feelings to the public that there's something fishy. I, I, I know that sounds strange, but that would be something that I would add to your DCAST list of evaluation. What do you think about that idea?
I'll take your consideration. I'll take your suggestions on the consideration.
All right, like everything else. But I do think that, um, also, I would prefer 250 Broadway, even though it costs more money because you can walk to City Hall, it's closer to other agencies and maybe you save time and money just by having, being closer, um, to the, uh, City Hall. That doesn't come under consideration?
I mean, that might be optimal for you because you go from 250 Broadway to City Hall. I don't know if that was optimal for the vulnerable clients that are being served by the Department of the Aging. So, to spend an extra $31 million just so one could walk across the street, I don't know if that's really worth it for the city taxpayers.
But it's also back to this issue of transparency. Like, I know you're saying it's going to cost more, but we don't know that it's costing more. We just hear from you. We're not knowing all of the details. Everything is not transparent. I think that's what people are concerned about.
But ma'am, ma'am, there's a process which includes the office of management and budget.
You know how we feel about OMB.
And everybody knows that Director Jiha is, is very conservative and conscious in his penny pinching on city taxpayer money. And I can't see a scenario in where we would propose spending $31 million more at a location where we could be spending over $31 million less.
Okay.
That OMB would approve.
All right, I, I mean, it's, it, we just don't know the facts. Now, finally, I let.
Ma'am, I'm giving you the facts.
I know.
14 Wall Street's $31 million more cheaper.
Okay, it's a built-out space. I understand that. Maybe we would have less space at 250 that would still accommodate them and still have, there's a big sign at 250 Broadway, "Space Available", big sign, every single day. So, I'm concerned that, it's hard to know what's factual, I'll put it that way. I am concerned just generally, Two Lafayette is going to stay empty for how long?
Well, Two Lafayette, at, at some point when the Department of Aging moves out, is going to have to undergo significant renovation. And at that time, we have some ideas of what city agencies may be able to move there and take over that city space. Because after it has been improved, um, we would look to locate a city agency there. And one of the agencies under consideration, I was reminded by my colleague, is, um, consumer and worker protection.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, thank you very much, council member Brewer. Before I shift gears to ask some questions about Diana Bootros, I just wanted to ask, in all of this back and forth of the best and final offer being selected and then deputy commissioner Hamilton shifting gears and choosing a different site, did DCAST return to 250 to see if they could match the offer that, the savings that you're alleging were available on the 14 Wall deal?
To my knowledge, to date, DCAST did not direct the tenant rep, I believe, to go back to 250 Broadway. But it's important to be reminded that 250 Broadway was also represented by CBRE. They were their shared client. So, um, I'm not, if, if CBRE went back to 250 Broadway and asked them, would they revise their deal? I don't know the answer to that.
And in your review of this case that you say you've, you've gone back on, um, uh, let me just, why isn't Jesse here to answer these questions? Right, you're saying you weren't involved, predates you. Why is the deputy commissioner not here to directly respond?
Sure, so I mean, as the commissioner, I believe that this is an opportunity for me to share my vision with all of you and answer your questions about our leasing practices. As commissioner, I decide who represents us in hearings.
And I appreciate that, but you've only been here 90 days.
For the best course of dialogue, it was best for myself and executive deputy commissioner Overton to be here to answer these questions.
Okay, um, all right, I'll, I'll keep moving. I think that, uh, we'll shift gears to Diana Bootros. I think there remain a lot of open questions. I hope you'll seriously consider the recommendations from my colleagues to, uh, pull back and reconsider this lease agreement. Now, I'd like to shift to questions about Diana Bootros. In 2017, DCAST executed a three-year contract with an optional two-year extension with Cushman and Wakefield to provide tenant representative services. In its proposal, Cushman specified that Robert Giglio would be serving as the account manager. Mr. Giglio has decades of experience in commercial real estate, working with city agencies and other large public and private clients such as AECOM, Aetna, UNICEF, JP Morgan and others in leasing office space. Toward the end of 2022, Mr. Giglio announced he would be retiring. To the best of your knowledge, did DCAST have conversations with Cushman and Wakefield about who the new account manager would be?
To the best of my knowledge to date, um, I'm not aware of any conversations that DCAST had on selecting who the account managers of the team should be.
Uh, I imagine that neither you nor executive deputy commissioner Overton can respond to many of these questions since you've only been in these roles respectively for a matter of days. But did anyone in the mayor's office weigh in, to the best of your knowledge, about who the new account rep would be at Cushman and Wakefield?
To the best of my knowledge, no.
Okay, um, I just want to underscore again why it's so frustrating that we don't have deputy commissioner Hamilton here or somebody who's been in these jobs for more than two months, three months, uh, to testify, to answer questions about what's transpired, that's so concerning. Could you explain the difference for me between office leasing and retail leasing?
As, as in retail and like a commercial store or?
It's a common phrase in commercial real estate, retail leasing versus office leasing. These are.
I mean, you know, we rent, we rent office space and we, we lease office space as, as a customer to some private landlords where we're the tenant. And then there are retail spaces, I would imagine, in things like maybe a mall or something like that that could be considered retail spaces.
So, as the New York Times has noted, retail leasing and office leasing are two distinct, I'll quote them. Retail leasing and office leasing are two distinct areas of expertise and it is unusual for a broker who has spent decades working in one to move over to manage a large account in the other. Disparate areas within commercial leasing, retail leasing, office leasing, totally different areas of expertise. Diana Bootros has spent her career in retail leasing, the Starbucks and Chipotles of the world. She has zero experience with office leasing. Could you explain to me why Diana Bootros is qualified to be the account manager for this multimillion dollar account with Cushman and Wakefield? Did Cushman and Wakefield submit information to DCAST on her qualifications? And if so, could you provide them to us?
If, if Cushman and Wakefield submitted any such documentation regarding Ms. Bootros, I, I have no objection of sharing that with you. I do not think, in my opinion, that it's a big leap. But again, it is Cushman and Wakefield's decision as to what staff members are going to be working on the city's account.
We've received information from multiple people within DCAST that DCAST officials, including deputy commissioner Hamilton, requested Ms. Bootros be the account manager on the Cushman and Wakefield account. Can you confirm or deny?
To, to date, I have not seen any.
Have you had that conversation with Mr. Hamilton?
Any such communication.
Have you ever discussed it with Mr. Hamilton?
I have not.
Okay, so you don't know. Okay.
I know that I've not seen any documentation that indicates that DCAST staff asks for any particular person to be selected to lead the account.
It's unusual for someone with zero relevant experience to be selected by Cushman and Wakefield to run such a significant account if DCAST didn't request it. So, which is what we've been advised. Do you know, did DCAST, did the conflicts of, the DCAST conflicts of interest officer or general counsel weigh in on any conflicts given Ms. Bootros's pre-existing relationship with Mr. Hamilton and Ingrid Lewis Martin prior to her appointment to this role?
Not that I've been made aware of to date.
You are aware of the significant donations that she's made to the mayor's campaigns over the years?
I'm not.
You haven't read that in the reporting about her?
I recall reading that in reporting and I didn't look it up.
I'm sorry to, okay, um, I can send you the articles, but I'll, I'll remind you. The Adams donations that she's made, she hosted a fundraiser in 2019. She's given many thousands of dollars. It's been reported in Politico that she's gone out, that Ingrid Lewis Martin's public schedule for multiple dates in 2022 and 2023 had full evenings and full weekend days spent with Diana Bootros prior to her selection for this role as account manager. I'd like to just shift to the Cushman portfolio and how things have changed since Diana Bootros has been appointed as the account manager. So, as we've discussed, this is an extremely, like wildly lucrative contract. Could you go through with me again, how much does the tenant rep receive on a lease agreement that they sign?
So, and within our tenant, first of all, the, the commissions are paid by the landlords. They're not paid by the city. Um, and what we indicate in our contract with our tenant representatives is we cap what those commission rates can be. And on leasing, it's 5% and that percentage may change over the term of the lease because it's determined by the term of the lease. Obviously, the dollar value of the lease, um, so every year might be a little bit different. And on an acquisition, I believe the cap is anywhere of a range between 4% and 6%.
Okay, so, just to give examples, um, ACS recently signed a lease for 110 William, 630,000 square feet, costing $28.8 million in year one, $30.7 million in subsequent years. So that works out to $1.4 million for the tenant rep in year one and over $6 million in the first five years of the deal. Is that consistent with your understanding?
Um, I can get back to you to give you a more substantive answer on exactly what the commission would be for that particular location, um, but that, that deal was negotiated by Mr. Giglio.
Understood. Um, I thought it was a CBRE deal, but either way, the, oh no, you're right, Mr. Giglio, excuse me. Just trying to get a sense of the scale of the amount of money that goes to these tenant reps on these contracts. $6 million over five years is a lot of money. Just trying to get a sense of the scale of the amount of money that goes to these tenant reps on these contracts. $6 million over five years is a lot of money. For one license agreement. And you mentioned on a purchase of a city building, we're going to talk a little bit more in a couple of minutes about the Bronx Logistics Center. Deputy Commissioner Hamilton has been trying to get the city to purchase this building for some time now at a cost of $670 million. If that deal were executed, that would be $13.4 million for Ms. Bootros. Is that right?
Depending on what agreement Cushman and Wakefield might have with the ownership group of the Bronx Logistics Center. We, like I said, we cap the amounts that the commissions can be.
And it's capped at $13.4 million is the maximum amount that Ms. Bootros could make on that purchase. We're talking about very significant amounts of money.
Well, I think it's clear, our contract is not with Ms. Bootros. Our contract and our tenant representative is with Cushman and Wakefield.
And she's the account manager for that contract. She's the lead representative. She gets the fee. Okay. So, the tenant representation services contract with Cushman expired in November of 2023. In January of '24, a negotiated acquisition extension was issued, extending until November of this year. Why hasn't the new RFP been issued?
So the new RFP represents something, I think, new in that we want to make sure that the city is represented by more than just two organizations on its real estate transactions. And we want to increase the tenant representation from the current two number, and our goal is to have five. And in addition to that, we were working with the Chief Diversity Officer of the city in order to make sure that we give minority and women-owned business enterprises that work in the real estate sector the opportunity to compete for that deal. So we had to work with him, the Law Department, and others to make sure that the language of that RFP allows for that level of competition and opportunity to take place.
I do want to come back on the MWBE piece, but could you just give us a timeline? When do you expect the RFP to come out?
By the end of the year.
By the end of the year. Oh, great. So it's coming quickly. So, let's shift to the MWBE piece. So in 2017, when CWE, CBRE and Cushman and Wakefield were selected for this contract, there was, I believe, a 31% goal for MWBEs on that contract. Is that right?
I'd have, I'd have to confirm that. I don't know. I'll have to.
I have it here. We reviewed the contract. So we had a 31%, I think it even extended to over 33% at a certain period of time on the deal. Since Ms. Bootros was assigned as the account hold, as the account lead for Cushman and Wakefield, that has slashed down to 10%. Can you explain why the current MWB participation on the contract has been slashed by over 2/3 since Ms. Bootros came in? When you're stating that the reason for the delay on this contract is to expand MWBEs?
Well, I'd have to, I'd have to follow up with you on that.
Okay. The, there was a contractor, JRT Realty, who has been working with Cushman and Wakefield for years, providing excellent services with Cushman while Bob Giglio was the account holder, was the account lead. And since Diana Bootros came in, the subcontractors were slashed, the MWB subcontractor was slashed.
So I'm being informed by my team that that was not the case. And that the MWB percentages are 10% for persons of color, black, owned businesses, 10% for Hispanic, and 10% for women, for a collective 30%.
For the new contract that you're hoping to, to release? Because for the current contract, there's no other subcontractors in place. So I'm confused. For the negotiated acquisition that we currently have, the only MWB sub involved is JRT Realty. They were slashed from over 30% to 10%. So we slashed MWBEs to give Diana Bootros more money and have done, and are, and we're supposedly delaying the RFP process to increase MWB participation.
I'm happy to look into that for you and provide you more clarity on that. I don't believe that the way it's being framed at the moment is, is accurate.
Oh, I think it is. Are you aware that Michael Garner, the Chief Diversity Officer for the city, has met with JRT Realty and Deputy Commissioner Hamilton multiple times to question why the MWB participation on this contract has been slashed?
I'm not aware of those meetings.
Yeah. And again, we wonder, we ask where Deputy Commissioner Hamilton is today. Okay. I, I'm, I think we, the question of why Diana Bootros and Cushman and Wakefield are getting so much more money at the expense of MWBEs despite her total lack of experience in office leasing is an open question that all New Yorkers should be asking right now. So, I'd like, before, in 2017, when the contract was assigned, the following agencies were given to Cushman and Wakefield: ACS, Department of Finance, Department of Health, HRA, Department of Sanitation. Have there been any changes in the portfolio since Ms. Bootros has been assigned the account holder between CBRE and Cushman and Wakefield?
I'm not aware of any changes as I sit here right now. I can tell you that Cushman and Wakefield represent about 1/3 of the agencies. And CBRE agencies, their work portfolio represents about 2/3. So CBRE has much more, many more agencies that they represent than Cushman and Wakefield. And they also outpaced Cushman and Wakefield significantly over the course of this administration. When it comes to real estate deals, Cushman and Wakefield has presented and worked with three. And CBRE, in our time in the administration, has had 21.
Okay. Executive Deputy Commissioner Overton, are you aware of shifts in responsibilities between the agencies that Cushman and Wakefield was responsible for versus CBRE?
No, I'm not aware of any changes.
And when did you start in this job?
I believe in September, September 3rd.
Okay. So about a month and change. All right, six weeks, eight weeks. Okay. It's a little, again, frustrating to have folks up here who can't answer the questions. We appreciate your best efforts. But my understanding is there have been significant new agencies assigned to Cushman and Wakefield and Ms. Bootros since she has taken over this account. Despite over many years there being a consistent breakdown between what agencies CBRE held and what agencies Cushman held. And that's because of some of the in-house expertise that CBRE brings to the table that Cushman doesn't. So I'm troubled by that shift in responsibility that has been increased to Cushman and Wakefield and Diana Bootros since she has come into this role. I'd like to ask about the pending RFP. So you said by the end of the year, and RFP is coming out, Cushman and Wakefield is the current account holder. Diana Bootros just went on a vacation with Jesse, Deputy Commissioner Hamilton, and Ingrid Lewis Martin. Do you think it's inappropriate that they're going on vacations together prior to this account that's worth many tens of millions of dollars being released for an RFP weeks after the vacation concluded?
Well, I'm not here to comment on the personal vacations and personal relationships that people have outside of work.
I, I'm not asking you to. I am asking you to comment on the ethics of your agency and making sure that our taxpayer dollars are being properly spent. Are you concerned, do you think it's appropriate for Deputy Commissioner Hamilton to be going on a vacation to Japan with the lead representative on a multi, a contract that's worth tens of millions of dollars and the RFP is being released weeks after their return?
Well, I expect that any staff member at DCAST comport themselves with an illegal way. And from what I know to date, Deputy Commissioner Hamilton has not violated any DCAST policy or HOIP policy that I'm aware of to date by his personal activities that are done in his own time. This was not a city business trip.
For me, it's, it's highly unseemly. It's unethical. It's, it's really concerning. And I'm disappointed we don't have the opportunity to ask these questions of Deputy Commissioner Hamilton today. And I really think it underscores what Councilmember Powers and others have, have requested from you, that you and Deputy Mayor Torres Springer conduct an immediate review of every single transaction that he's been responsible for during his time as Deputy Commissioner for Real Estate. I am very troubled.
Review of, of all of the divisions within DCAST to find opportunities where we can improve transparency and enhance efficiency.
I appreciate that, Commissioner Molina, but you said very clearly you reviewed the 14-Wall, and that was deal, and that was it. You said you've done a comprehensive review of the agency. I appreciate that. You've got a big job. DCAST is a hard agency to run, wildly disparate functions, important responsibilities. But we're concerned specifically today about the alleged corruption by Deputy Commissioner Hamilton and in his division. And we'd like to see a comprehensive review take place of every real estate transaction that he's been responsible for. Because the things that we're asking about today leave more questions than answers, and that's my concern. Okay. I'd like to shift gears to the Bronx Logistics Center, one of Mr. Hamilton's top priorities. Erica, do we have the video? Are we able to show? I don't know where she is. Is she here? Okay. It's coming up now. We're going to just show a quick video for, for you that I found confusing. This is Erica's screen, and here's the video. Apologize for the quality. We got volume?
Darson, I want this one.
No volume.
I don't know. I don't know how to get the madness.
Erica, you're, okay. We'll just go ahead. We'll just go ahead. If we have an opportunity, we'll ask about it later. So, this is a video that Deputy Commissioner Hamilton had created to promote the Bronx Logistics Center, a privately owned site. Have you seen this video before?
I have not.
You've never seen this video?
I've never seen that video.
Oh.
I mean, I have not seen the few clips that were presented on the screen, and I'm not aware of any video that DC Hamilton created.
You're not aware of this, the existence of this video?
I'm not aware of it. I've never seen it till it was just slightly posted.
Can you explain to me, why would the Deputy Commissioner for Real Estate and his team create a promotional video of a privately owned site to encourage city agencies to be enticed to lease space there?
Well, being that I have not seen the video, it's hard for me to comment on the context of why the video was made.
Okay. Okay. Don't you think, just help me here, we'll do this hypothetically. For a video that is being created by DCAST of a privately owned site for a building that we'd either be purchasing or leasing, wouldn't promoting it, putting that out on YouTube, trying to encourage, wouldn't that inflate the price? Like, I don't really understand the negotiating strategy. If the building owner knows that Jesse, that Deputy Commissioner Hamilton is promoting a site for purchase and encouraging city agencies to consider it, wouldn't that make the, wouldn't that increase the sale price from the owners or the lease price?
Having, having not seen the video, I would, you know, I would reserve my comments after I've had time to review the video.
All right. We'll try to get it on for you. Has DCAST ever made a promotional video, to your knowledge, to promote the purchase or renting, leasing of a space?
To my knowledge to date, I have not, in my 90 days there, have thought about creating a video to share with prospective agencies that may be able to utilize the space.
Okay. And do you think it's appropriate for DCAST to create a promotional video for a privately owned space?
Well, I'm not against the use of videos. I think that if we had a space, then one option to provide agency workers that may be teleworking to kind of view the space, it's possible that one could consider sending a video. But I have not seen the video that you tried to show, so I don't have a comment on that specifically.
I don't have as much experience as Councilmember Brewer, but I've worked in city government for a while. I can never remember anything like this at all. I, I think it's bizarre and frankly smells funny. To your knowledge, when did DCAST begin considering a purchasing or lease agreement for the Bronx Logistics Center? And how did DCAST become aware of this site?
Well, in most sites in general are brought to us by tenant representatives for consideration to the city to address a number of space needs that the city may have. So I don't know how Bronx Logistics Center came to us, but I believe, because that was presented at the meeting that you referenced earlier.
Right.
The entire team of Cushman and Wakefield to walk me through their thinking of why they thought the Bronx Logistics Center could serve a good purpose for the city.
Okay. I would have thought we were meeting the needs of city agencies rather than meeting the needs of Cushman and Wakefield. The thing that's unusual about, about these contracts.
City agencies have a number of needs. And when those needs are outside of the available square footage that's under the city's control.
Right.
And we get authorization to look for leased space or thinking about opportunities where the city can possibly make a strategic acquisition, those opportunities are presented to us by tenant representatives. They, we're not bound to do them.
Right. But the thing that's unusual about these tenant representative contracts is that, and I'm sure there's some, lots of people who operate with integrity, and I don't, I'm not trying to paint too broad a brush. But the thing that's unusual about these contracts is, the higher the lease agreement, the higher the license agreement, the higher the purchase price, the more money they make, right? And so, you know, they have every incentive to make more deals at higher prices for the city of New York because that is what, that's good for, that's good for them.
Yes, but Councilmember, we have a process that involves us, City Hall, the Office of Management and Budget, City Planning, this body, to make sure that the deals we are negotiating on behalf of.
Was there authorization from OMB to pursue the Bronx Logistics Center?
No.
No, okay. No, we just have a promotional video from the Deputy Commissioner from DCAST?
Presenting it, right? So I haven't seen the video, so I can't speak directly to the video.
Why don't we try again on the video? Let's see, because I, I find this whole thing just confounding. Can we try again on this video? We'll see how competent we are technologically today. Hold your, hold, okay. No? All right. I'll keep going. This thing doesn't work. We'll send, well.
I, I can tell you that I have a lot of confidence in our marketing and communications team. So we did not produce this video, according to my colleagues.
This video was produced by DCAST?
I was told it was not.
Okay. We, I, I don't know who's given you this information, but this was a DCAST video created by DCAST for DCAST to promote this site. Do you want to clarify? Do you want to say who it was?
No, I'm, I'm being informed that DCAST did not produce this video.
So DCAST starred in it but didn't produce it? We were told explicitly this was created by Mr. Charles Gross, who works for Jesse Hamilton, to promote the Bronx Logistics Center.
My understanding is that the DCAST communications team did not produce this video.
No, the DCAST Real Estate Division did, which is even stranger, right? So that, that's not, that's, we're finding over semantics. DCAST created the video. That's clear. I'm sorry that you don't have a chance to watch it today. We'll send it to you later. So, you recently had a meeting about this site. Which agencies would be utilizing the Bronx Logistics Center?
Well, agencies under consideration when we were reviewing the site would be to station agency vehicles as well as possibly vehicles that may be towed.
Could you specify which agencies?
So we were considering the Department of Sanitation, the NYPD. And those are the two sort of what I would call large agencies that would possibly use the site.
Okay. And?
And these are very, very preliminary conversations.
Okay. Do you know if, so OMB has not provided authorization for this. Do you know if they support the purchase or leasing of the site?
I, I have been made aware that OMB is not funding or entertaining this as an option.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear. Could you clarify how much the owners of the Bronx Logistics Center have spent lobbying the city, including Deputy Commissioner Hamilton, to advance this?
I do not have information regarding what expenses is borne by the ownership group of Bronx Logistics Center. I don't have that information.
My understanding is approximately $100,000. I'd like to just shift gears away from this to some of the broader questions that Councilmember Brewer was asking about regarding headcount and space. Firstly, I just want to ask about that within Deputy Commissioner Hamilton's division. So, as you know well from your time as DOC Commissioner and your tenure in this administration, we've experienced multiple hiring freezes, and we've seen a significant shrinkage in the headcount in city government over the course of these three years. Is that right?
There's been, there's been a significant shrinkage in, in employment headcount overall.
Yes. However, the Real Estate Services Division has grown in the past two years since Deputy Commissioner Hamilton took it over by approximately 33%. From 90 active employees in FY '22 to 119 active employees in FY '24. During this time, so, DCAST's overall budget and headcount has been reduced by 75 positions during this time. There are 300 vacancies over the past two years. Could you help explain to us, as Councilmember Brewer pointed out, at a time when the total workforce of the city is shrinking, more people are doing remote work, we have a less of a need for space, why we would see such a dramatic increase in Deputy Commissioner Hamilton's headcount?
Yeah. So I mean, workforce leave, workforce retire. Yeah, so, I mean, workforce leave, workforce retire. I think it's important that D-CAS have a level of expertise within real estate, within the Real Estate Services Division, so we employ transaction managers, attorneys in that space. It's very complex work that they oversee with the tenant representatives. It's also important to point out that when we look at our asset and property management portfolio as a whole, they have the largest number of vacancies. So we are working to shore up those vacancies, so in addition to Real Estate Services, our other responsibilities in facilities management can also be addressed with our aging property portfolio of the approximate 55 buildings that we oversee.
I appreciate that. It's just unusual that we have seen so many parts of D-CAS shrink significantly during these three years, and yet Deputy Commissioner Hamilton has had the approval to dramatically increase both the active and budgeted headcount of his unit by 33 percent. I don't think there is a, I'm not sure there is another, I think any other deputy commissioner in the City of New York would love to have experienced a headcount increase during this, this administration, when the city has shrunk so significantly. To see such a massive increase under Deputy Commissioner Hamilton speaks to support from City Hall, support from OMB, that he and his team are receiving, that others across the breadth and entirety of the administration quite simply are not. And I'm just going to ask one more question, and then we're going to try again on the, we'll see how, how we do on this video. Since FY20, so over the last five years, we've seen city lease payments grow by about 20 percent, from 1.2 billion in FY20 to about 1.5 billion in FY24. And as I mentioned, and as Councilmember Brewer's mentioned, and others, the city workforce has shrunk dramatically during that time period. Remote work policies are being implemented, further reducing our need and demand for space. I know you're working on some initiatives to advance those goals and make things work better and more cost-effectively. But, in addition to those changes, asking rents for office spaces are down about 10 percent over these five years. So, shrinking workforce, increased use reliance on remote work, office space rents are down citywide. Why has our lease portfolio continued to expand so much during this time, especially under Deputy Commissioner Hamilton's leadership?
So, I, I think it's important to point out that a lot of, the majority of these real estate deals are two to three years in, in a process. And what you're seeing now is not only the effects of those two or three years of lease deals that were in a pipeline that cross over two administrations, a migrant crisis that, that required the city to find space to house over 200,000 individuals that have come through our city and manage that issue. And in one hand, you're, you're casting negative aspersions on the situation regarding leasing, but when we found an over $31 million savings in the 14 Wall Street versus 250 Broadway, you're upset that we got a lower, a lower price offer that saved the city taxpayers over $31 million? Like, I, I don't understand that.
I'm always happy when we save taxpayer dollars. I'm confused about the process that unfolded in this case. I'm happy to, to, to go back through this with you one more time. It sounds like you'd like to. So, best and final offer was selected for a different building. Deputy Commissioner Hamilton unilaterally chose to go in a different direction to support a building, the owner of whom, owner of which is given generously to the mayor. No return offer, no return in the negotiations was made back to 250 Broadway to see if they could compete with the new price. My understanding is the numbers that you've shared are not accurate in terms of the cost the 250 Broadway was prepared to take on to renovate the space, to make it inhabitable for DIFTA. I'm not convinced that the cost savings are as significant as you're laying out. I'm even more concerned about the process, and the fact that Deputy Commissioner Hamilton had such wide latitude and discretion to be able to send these lease agreements and license agreements wherever he thought made the most sense, and clearly, where City Hall thinks makes the most sense. And despite all of these open questions, all of these concerns, your lack of awareness about the very generous donations that the building owner at 14 Wall has made to this administration, you're unwilling to pull the, the application back, to revisit it, to research it, you're unwilling to, frankly, do a comprehensive review of all of Deputy Commissioner Hamilton's real estate transactions that raise very significant ethical concerns. So, that's my concern. That is what I'm, that's why we're having this hearing today. We're going to try to show this to you one more time. I'm not banking on it, but we'll try. Let's, let's do one more, and we'll see, because you haven't seen this video, so you'll enjoy it.
We're here at the Bronx Logistics Center. It's a phenomenal place, 1.3 million square feet, which can accommodate a lot of the city agencies. It's a state-of-the-art industrial space warehouse, which has a platinum LEED certification. We have a great team here. It was assembled today. We have Eric Abad from OMB, George Donahue from the leasing unit, R.E.S. at D-CAS, and we just want to thank Eric Abad for having the foresight to be here and coming with short notice, George Donahue for looking for the location, and, and Charles, Charles Gross, he's, he's a phenomenal guy. He, he said, Jesse, we need to see this place. I, I said, I know I have a great team, let's go see the place, and now I think we're, we're on the cutting edge. And I just want to say, you know, let Eric say something real quick, and then let George.
Thank you. This place is amazing. I think this is huge potential. It'd be a great possible benefit for the city, like Jesse mentioned, with LEED Platinum. It's exactly the future of the city and where we need to be.
I am Jesse Hamilton, Deputy Commissioner. I'm sorry, I didn't mention that.
Yes, this is an excellent building for the City of New York. Plus, the community is going to love this. We're going to create new jobs, be very energy-efficient, and very operationally perfect.
And this is great economic, economic development. Thousands of jobs will be created here. We have a mayor, we're visionary, to make sure we have economic development, and I'm sure this is a win-win for all, everybody involved, so.
Great. That's a snippet. My understanding is this is a 12 or 13-minute-long video as a whole.
Well, I thank, I thank you, Chairman, for bringing the video to my attention.
Great.
If you want to send me a link so I can see the full version of the video, and I will look into it further.
Okay. Now that you've had a chance to see what I was referencing, any further feedback on the appropriateness of a video like this, of D-CAS promoting a privately-owned space for utilization?
Not at this time.
Okay.
But I will follow up with you.
All right. I, I can just, I just want to say one more time, in my years in government experience, I can never recall D-CAS promoting a private site for utilization. It's the role of D-CAS to execute the best deals for the city workers, for the city taxpayers. It is not D-CAS's role to be promoting the best interests of private property owners, which is what I think we see here on this video. Councilmember Brewer would like to ask a couple of questions.
That's a lousy video, so I'm sure that your communication staff did not make it.
Yeah, they did not.
Lousy.
Thank you for recognizing the poor quality of the video.
Just, Mr. Hamilton, all that by itself, that is not appropriate, and he should be taken to task just for the video. I have a question about just generally city-owned space. I do know that it's in poor shape in some cases, but do we have, as a public, the listing of the 55 buildings, some of which are garages, but I'm talking mostly about where we have offices, and what space is available, even if it has to be renovated?
Yeah.
Is that something that's available to the public? Because I think what you're sort of hearing is, even though it's bad space in terms of needs renovations, the public, certainly me in particular, still feels like there might be space available, that's available, that is less expensive in city-owned buildings, given the fact that we have fewer workforce.
Yeah, so we actually do, every other year, publish what's called a City-Owned and Leased Portfolio Report. It's, it's being done in conjunction with another agency that publicizes that report, and often, individuals peruse that report to see, to see what space is available, or there are times where individuals might have interest in renting city-owned space, and they contact Real Estate Services, and we do often lease out a lot of city-owned space for retail, and between short-term leases and long-term leases, we generate nearly $40 million in revenue a year.
Okay, that's in terms of the commercial. I would assume that would be first floor you're talking about, or you're talking about office space also?
Mostly commercial floor, I would describe it as storefront space.
Okay.
It was, is what I would best describe.
Okay, no, I-
We can give you a more detailed-
All right, I mean, I would love to at some point, maybe, to get more information, because there's lots of commercial space, 253, 280 Broadway. I walk by them every day, they're all vacant.
Always happy to meet with you and any other member-
Okay, we'd like to get those-
Counsel.
No, I'm talking more about what's available at one center, what's available, we know two left, yeah, what's available to, at 22 Reed, et cetera.
Yeah.
Because when you say we have to rent at a private location, okay, but then I'd like to see the data that we haven't fixed up the space, or that we're in the midst of fixing up the space, even if it's older space. I know the whole issue with 22 Reed and the burial center, I know the whole story. But what is, you know, is it really true that we, I remember Mayor Bloomberg said, or, no, somebody said, yeah, Mayor Bloomberg said, after he had sold some of the city-owned buildings, that maybe we shouldn't have done that. We did. So then the question is, what's left and what's available? Is that something that you publish or that we can get our hands on?
Happy to work with you and your team to get you that information.
Oh, so it's not public now?
I don't, I, I believe through the citywide owned and leased portfolio, it may be public, what you're specifically asking for, but I'll follow up and confirm.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will leave it there for today for questions. Commissioner, I really do want to thank you for coming, doing your best to answer questions, and Executive Deputy Commissioner Overton, congratulations on your recent promotion. I just have to say, in conclusion, I think there are a lot of very serious, open questions about decisions that have been made at D-CAS in recent years. And I realize you're coming in new, you're trying to bring your fresh perspective and provide an overview of, provide a review of what's transpired, but the fact that we have seen no comprehensive review of Deputy Commissioner Hamilton's decisions, no guardrails imposed, no modified duty, is concerning. And I hope that, in good faith, you'll take back the concerns that have been raised by my colleagues and I today, and choose a different course, because I think it's urgently needed. So, thank you both for coming today. We have some members of the public that will be testifying shortly.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you again to the D-CAS team for making themselves available. For what it's worth, apparently Mayor Adams noted in his press conference at 11:30, his weekly off-topic, that Deputy Commissioner Torres Springer is conducting a review of D-CAS leases, so we're glad to know that that is happening. Hopefully, they'll tell D-CAS sometime soon. I'm now open, I'd now like to open the hearing for public testimony. I would like to remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding, and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table, except when you're testifying, of course, the witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is permitted from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with the Sergeant-at-Arms and wait to be recognized. When recognized, you have three minutes to speak on today's hearing topic. If you have a written statement or additional testimony you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy of that testimony to the Sergeant-at-Arms. You may also email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of the hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. I would now like to call up our first and only panel, as far as I know, Sharon Brown-Jeter, Christopher Leon Johnson, and Barbara Manu? Wang? Sorry, sorry if I got that really wrong. I think, what, I don't, I'm not sure. We're going to see. Okay. Why don't we start with Ms. Brown-Jeter? You have two minutes, and we will go from there.
Hello, my name is Sharon Brown-Jeter. Can you give me an overview of what, where's the specific topic?
It's always good to have you here with us, Ms. Brown-Jeter. The topic we're focusing on today relates to leases and real estate practices by the Department of Citywide Administrative Services.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I would like to say, we are keeping Israel in our prayers, defend Israel. We need to have the hostages released and let Yahweh's people go. Okay. For the leases, the things that, they said, Mayor Bloomberg said, we sold it to some people, some of the properties that we had. We do have eminent domain, but we don't have to go that far. If those properties are something that we want back, we can go back to the people that we sold it to, and we can offer them some compensation in order to get those buildings back, if it's even feasible. If there's any property that the city lost, and it is incumbent, it, it would be incumbent upon us to use the laws that we have at our disposal. If there's any dire need for us to have those buildings back, we could always use eminent domain, and we also would compensate people for that, or we could just do some kind of deal to get it back. We need to make sure we get people into housing immediately. We need to make sure that the city is renting out properties, so that when we have people who become homeless, military, and whoever they are, that we have properties that we already lease in the name of the government, whether it be complete houses, whether it be apartments, or whatever kind of living situation that is not congreg- congregation, congregant living, and we need to be able to offer it to people without strings attached. And that's how we can eliminate homelessness, by getting a key, giving it to them, and getting out of their business.
Well said. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Leon Johnson.
Hey, what's up? Chair Wrestler, my name is Christopher Leon Johnson. I agree with everything that you said to Mr. Molina, but where was Jesse Hamilton? Where was the corrupt former state senator that got voted out by Zelena Marie and his wife, Donna Richardson Marie? We all know what's going on here. This is, and, and I, I could say, we just found out through this lobbyist named Maria Torres Springer that she's going to look into the deal. That shouldn't be happening. That's like a bank robber looking into a fraud scheme. Maria Torres Springer is captive to all these, I'm a veteran of New York, and all these real estate organizations like Rebny, that are hell-bent on selling out the city to the people. Maria Torres Springer should not be looking to this. I don't know what's your power as in the City Council, but she should not be, you, you should bar from looking into this. You should be investigated by an independent investigator, like independent, independent pet. Let's make this clear. Maria Torres Springer is a lobbyist, Maria Joshi's a lobbyist. None of these members of the mayor's office should be looking into anything that D-CAS is doing. This is, like I said, anytime a member in the mayor's office is looking into anything that any of these city agencies is doing, especially this administration under this indicted mayor, Eric Adams, is like bank robbers looking into a fraud scheme. It's like a domestic violence suspect looking into a stalking scheme. That's what's going on here. So, this, this is nothing but a, everybody knows what's happening here. This is Mayor Eric, Eric Adams in a nutshell, with the help of the Brooklyn Democratic Machine, the Brooklyn Democratic Party, working, installing Jesse Hamilton to do all these schemes for Eric, Eric Adams' right-hand chick, Ingrid Louis Martin. So this is what's going on here. This is all it's about. This is nothing but dirty deals done by the mayor's office and the, the party. This is what it's about. And people got started looking to everything. So, the City Council should be having, introducing a bill in the City Council to have an independent board, independent agency to oversee this schematic of a D-CAS real estate land grab. Everybody knows what the developers, selling, selling land, selling property to developers, and for, like I said, the Brooklyn Democratic Machine, and they're going to make a million, they're going to make a million dollars out of this. People got started looking to the, the law firm, Pizza, like the Pizza Law Firm, Grant, not Grant, um, Mr. Car, um, Carone, Ben Carone, and all these other characters. And this is what's happening here.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Yeah.
Today's Frank Carone's birthday, so we can all wish him a happy birthday.
Yeah.
And, and I hope that it was noted on the record that you started your testimony by saying you agree with me. So I think that was the first time I've heard that in a while. you agree with me. So I think that was the first time I've heard that in a while, and I appreciate it. So thank you, Mr. Leon Johnson. It's good to see you.
Yeah, I'm going to go to the dang downstairs, the alley outside of Sebep Israel.
Have a good day. Thank you for being with us. And we have one final person on this panel, and I don't, I think I'm mispronouncing your last name. Ms. Barbara, would you tell us your name for the record?
Barbara Manu. Manu.
Barbara Manu. Oh, I was right. Jay Sree was wrong. Just wanted to get that on the record, too. Ms. Manu, please.
I wanted to address the problem I had with, my children have with the city of New York, but I wanted to address it to Ms. Brewer.
I can follow up with her, please.
Well, I went to her office three months ago regarding the way the city have treated my children and myself, dehumanizing us by city agencies. Currently, we've been homeless, we are homeless since June 2018. This is my fifth time coming to hearing here, but it's always turned to their fears. My children was receiving SSI and was sent to direct express, which is a federal contractor, contractor by, with social security. They have not received no payments. Our section eight was taken away from us, just to create homelessness for us. That's what I want to say. I left messages on answering machine, also missed other city council members, but I haven't got no reply.
Okay. Well, Ms. Manu, we really appreciate you joining us today and sharing your experience. Happy to gather some more information, figure out how we can be of assistance. At this point, I'm going to-
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank this panel for joining us. I don't know where my thing is. What do I have to say? I will now adjourn the hearing. Thank you so much, and thank you to the Sergeant-at-Arms for your assistance.